Good evening, everyone. Tonight is Tuesday, May 5th, 2020, and I'd like to welcome everyone to the Fitchburg City Council meeting. So please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording of this broadcast, and I would like to invite Counselor Walsh to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh. Madam Clerk, could you please conduct the roll call?
The following counselors have logged in and are present at this meeting. President Kusmerik, Counselor Boishman, Counselor Kutcher, Counselor Gina Tally, Counselor Fleming, Counselor Green, Counselor Schultz, Counselor Squalia, Counselor Van Hazinga, Counselor Walsh, Counselor Zarella.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We had an opportunity for the public to either submit written or verbally transcribed public comments to the body. We received none up until noon today. We do have one department head joining us. I believe we have John Delain on the line as our only member here for public comment. John, are you with us?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. The floor is yours.
Start right now?
Yes, you are live on broadcast with us, and the floor is yours. If you kindly introduce yourself and the items that you're speaking to.
Thank you. Hi, this is John Delain. I'm the Deputy Commissioner of Water Supply. Good evening, counselors. I hope everybody's doing well as they can be expected in these trying times. I'm gonna do my best tonight. Doing it this way, I'd rather be in person, but unfortunately, that wasn't possible. I am here before you to respectfully request the suspension of the rules for orders 112-20 through 116-20, which all relate to the Jewel Hill Farm Land Preservation Project. This property and buildings consist of approximately 300 acres, of which 138 are in Fitchburg, 76 in Ashby, and 84 in Ashburnham. We have partnered the city, the Fitchburg Conservation Commission, and the town of Ashburnham with the trustees of reservations in this land preservation project. The trustees of reservations is going to purchase this property, and the city of Fitchburg is going to hold a conservation restriction on the entire property, including the section in Ashburnham and Ashby. Ashburnham will also hold a conservation restriction on the portion in their community. The grants that we were received for these, for this project typically require matching funds of approximately 50%. The trustees of reservations is also going to be donating a total of $303,200 to the city of Fitchburg to cover our matching funds. I did attach a budget to an earlier email I sent out this afternoon. And that cost to the city is going to be about $46,000. Ashburnham has a similar agreement for their portion. They're also working with the trustees of reservations, and the trustees is donating money to their community for this project, so they also have a similar cost. The property and the farm buildings appraised at 1.26 million, so being able to protect all this property from development for about 45,000 is, I think, a great thing. In December, the city council approved accepting the grants, the grant, as well as a donation from the trustees of reservations for the portion of the property in Fitchburg. The grant for the Fitchburg portion was obtained by the Fitchburg Conservation Commission, working with the water division as well as the trustees of reservations. That was what is called a land grant, which is a local acquisition for natural diversity grant. The orders tonight consist of accepting the grants, the grant for the Ashby portion of the property, and a donation from the trustees of reservations for that Ashby portion as well. And we also have an order related to the CR on the Ashburnham portion of the property. Again, we're going to be holding that CR on the entire property, including sharing basically the CR on the Ashburnham portion with the town of Ashburnham. The other, one order, 114-20, deals with allocating the funds for due diligence costs, such as the land survey, title search, and baseline documentation report. The baseline documentation report is a very detailed report that essentially documents all the conditions across the property, whether it's forest land, field, building, wetlands, stone walls, anything like that. And that report is used to enforce the CR later on when we do inspections on the property, which is typically done annually, but because we're in the area, we'll do them more regularly. So that baseline documentation report will make sure that, you know, there's full compliance with the CR as far as protecting the property and, you know, basically no abuses of the land take place. As I said, the city's portion of the cost, the 45,000 for due diligence costs, will come out of the water division's land preservation account, which only can be used for land protection projects. So it isn't coming out of anything that would go toward water mains or anything like that. It's been set aside and dedicated for that. I apologize for asking for a suspension of the rules, but the timeline for these grants require that they be completed in FY '20. And only last week did we receive official notification of the award of the drinking water supply protection grant for the Ashby portion of the property. I included a copy of the letter from last week to show the dates that, you know, that we're dealing with, receiving it last week and then having to close by the end of June. We had thought that maybe some extension of time would be granted because of the COVID-19 crisis, but that has not been the case with these grants, and we need to close them in fiscal year '20. Unfortunately, I think it was a delay in getting the notification out to the city, which kind of put us in this bit of a time crunch to get it, you know, basically get everything done and closed out in June. We want to have, the trustees wants to be able to close on the property at the end of May, at the beginning of June at the latest, and then be able to get all the paperwork and everything in for reimbursement so we can close out the project by the end of June. So, as I said earlier, the water division, as well as the state of Massachusetts, will be conducting monitoring at the property to ensure that there's no, you know, violations of the CR at any time in the future. But I don't anticipate that will be the case with the trustees of reservations. They have a hundred-plus-year history of excellent land stewardship, and I don't think we could ask for a better partner in this land protection project. I sent the link earlier today. I think that, you know, outlines one of the many, you know, many of the projects they have across the state. I'm sure some of you have been to some of them, and they are just known for excellence, and I think this will be a great thing for the area, not only to protect the watershed, the northern reservoir system, but it will also protect against additional flooding down on John Fitch Highway, because this watershed eventually makes its way down to there. So any development up there would have resulted in additional runoff, you know, basically quicker runoff and higher flows down that area when we did have, you know, severe rain events. So there's other pluses to the property other than just protecting the watershed. I'm also hoping that at some point down the road, that this will be in attraction in the area, and will bring people through Fitchburg, because that will be basically the most direct route to the property. And when they have events and activities up there, I'm hoping that will help the area's economy. I thank you for your time, and if there's any questions, I'd be willing to answer anything that you have. Thank you.
John, this is what we're gonna do. I'm gonna mute you for the time being. We're going to take a vote on suspension, and if counselors have questions, I'll unmute you and direct the question to you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So counselors, I have a motion made by Counselor Squalia for suspension of the rules on 112 through 116-20, and the motion has been seconded by Counselor Zarella. This is a non-debatable motion. Madam Clerk, if you could conduct a roll call vote.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Counselor Zarella?
Yes.
President Kusmerik?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
Yay.
Counselor Kutcher?
Yes.
Counselor Gina Tally?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Squalia?
Yay.
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
It is unanimous.
So the matters are now before the body. If there are questions, please, I would ask that you use the chat box. Mr. Mayor, I believe you are looking to speak. Let me unmute you here. Mayor, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I just wanted to highlight the fact that this is another example of the extraordinary work that's being done and the amounts of land that we're securing as watershed in the city of Fitchburg. This is shockingly, for some perhaps, far surpasses any of our neighbors, and this is something we should be proud of. I also want to thank Commissioner Delain for his efforts on this behalf. And again, we have more watershed property. We've protected more of one of our prime assets than any community of its size or in the region, and we will continue to tout that as an extraordinary accomplishment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Schultz, you now have the floor.
Question, John. I think I heard two different figures for our net costs. One was 45,000, the other was 46. What's the final figure, John?
Commissioner Delain?
Yes, the exact figure is 45,518.
Counselor Schultz, the floor is still yours. Anything further?
No, I think that's, it's gonna be a great project, great protection of our watershed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Schultz. I will, I'll add, you know, I think this is a wonderful opportunity for the city of Fitchburg to protect our watershed. Commissioner Delain, our Conservation Commission, just, it truly does a wonderful job. Tracy Serfield had spoken with me earlier today, talking about, you know, the amount of preservation and conservation that we do and the tremendous efforts that go into it. And our watershed is the envy of most cities and towns across the Commonwealth, and I think we owe that in part, in large part, to our Conservation Commission, and again, our Commissioner John Delain. I have a motion for approval of 112 through 116-20, made by Counselor Squalia, and seconded by Counselor Zarella. Speaking to the motion, counselors, your last opportunity. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, I would ask you to conduct the roll call vote.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Counselor Zarella?
Yes.
President Kusmerik?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
Definitely.
Counselor Kutcher?
Yes.
Counselor Gina Tally?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Squalia?
Yay.
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
It is unanimous.
Motion carries. Next, we have, thank you, Commissioner Delain. I appreciate you joining us by telephone this evening.
Thank you all so much. I really appreciate it. I appreciate the comments and the support.
Absolutely. Have a good evening, sir. Next, we have, if there are no objections, we'll take an oral report from the Appointments Committee, which met earlier this evening, and took up the following matters. City Auditor and Finance Director for the city of Fitchburg, this is a reappointment term to expire on May 1st, 2023, of Mr. Calvin D. Brooks. That was unanimous. City Treasurer and Tax Collector for the city of Fitchburg, term to expire on May 1st, 2023, also a reappointment. That was of Ms. Anzurantes. That was unanimous. New appointment for the Human Rights Commission, term to expire on May 1st, 2023, of Ms. Senovia Bolivar. And last Board of License Commissioner, term to expire January 1st, 2026, of Mr. John Zarella. I have two counselors this evening who are asking to recuse themselves. Counselor Zarella, you may have the floor to recuse yourself.
Yes, thank you. Would you like me to make the other motion prior to refusal or after this?
Counselor, if you don't mind, what I might do is, because Counselor Fleming is also asking to be recused, is if you'd be willing, both of you, to recuse yourself from the Appointments Committee vote, we could simply vote on that and just have you come back and join us.
Certainly, yes. So I'll be recusing myself for the obvious reason. It is my father who's being approved to the License Commission, so, or hopefully. So I will be muting myself and taking myself off video until that vote has been taken.
Thank you, Counselor Zarella. Counselor Fleming, the floor is yours.
Yes, I'll be recusing myself because it is my ex-sister-in-law that is going for the Human Rights Committee.
Excellent. Thank you, Counselor Fleming. If you could just mute yourself and turn off your video. All right, counselors, the matter is now before the council. I apologize, you're unmuted.
Make a motion to accept the appointments.
I have a motion and second to accept the appointments. Speaking on the motion, all those in favor? I apologize, Madam Clerk. Roll call vote.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President Kusmerik?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
Yes.
Counselor Kutcher?
Yes.
Counselor Gina Tally?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Squalia?
Yay.
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Now, I'd like to welcome back Counselor Zarella and Counselor Fleming. I'm sure they're back with us. Wonderful. All right, next, if there's one moment here, can we have a report from the Committee on Records? Counselor Squalia, the floor is yours.
We've reviewed the records, and they appear to be in order.
Do I have a motion to accept the?
I make the motion.
Motion to accept?
I have a motion and second to accept the report from the Committee on Records. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Counselor Zarella?
Yes.
President Kusmerik?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
Yes.
Counselor Kutcher?
Yes.
Counselor Gina Tally?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Squalia?
Yay.
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
It is unanimous.
Next, we have communications from His Honor, the mayor. We have one such communication of Ms. Maritza Knight, as a member of the Human Rights Commission, term to expire May 1st, 2023. Counselors, that stands referred to the Appointments Committee. And we also had one communication and report regarding the Pension and Reserves Investment Management Board that will be placed on file in the city clerk's office. Next, counselors, we have a City Property Committee Oral Reports. Counselor Zarella, I know the meeting was moved. If you could just speak to that briefly?
Yes, actually, we did. We did hold our meeting, and we took up three matters. 041 and 042-20 were both the AKS recycling lease. That was held again, because we still do not have final documents on that. 046-20 was to declare Athier Street a public way. That has been tabled, because we are awaiting further developments essentially, and we don't know how long that might be.
Move to accept the committee report?
Check in.
I have a motion and second to accept the City Property Committee report. Speaking on the motion, Madam Clerk, if you could conduct the roll call vote.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Counselor Zarella?
Yes.
President Kusmerik?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
Yes.
Counselor Kutcher?
Yes.
Counselor Gina Tally?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Squalia?
Yay.
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Counselors, 104-20 Orders Finance up through and including 111-20, stand referred to the Finance Committee, which will be next Tuesday. Next, we have the Orders Other. We're taken under suspension. So next, we have Counselors, 111-20 Resolution. Counselors, I'll read the entire resolution before us this evening. Be it resolved that the city of Fitchburg is resolute in its stand against bigotry, hatred, indifference, and racism in our city and society, whereas acts and expressions of bigotry and racism have become increasingly prevalent across social media and other forums, both locally and nationally, and whereas hateful expressions of intolerance, in contradictory to the values and aspirations that define the city of Fitchburg, and whereas principles of tolerance and religious freedom, fundamental to American democracy, are threatened by such behavior and indifference, and whereas Fitchburg is home to a diverse array of ethnicities, nationalities, and religions that contribute to the rich cultural tapestry that is our city and region, and whereas the city views unity and cohesion as critical amid a global pandemic, and whereas it is incumbent upon city officials to conduct themselves through their personal and professional lives as the models of behavior it seeks from its residents. Therefore, be it resolved that the city of Fitchburg take a stand against hate, division, and racism in our community, and ensure that the city acts with the same compassion, kindness, and respect that we ask from our citizens. Respectfully submitted, Michael Kusmerik, City Council President, Elizabeth R. Walsh, City Council Vice President, Stephen L. Gina Tally, Mayor. Counselors, this was introduced to us this evening as a result of a constituent who came forth to the mayor, Council Vice President Walsh, and I. The individual had seen a derogatory and deflamatory response posted on social media in our city, and the individual felt, that same individual represents a large minority group within our city, and sits on various minority coalitions throughout our city and region, felt that this, beyond just this singular post, was really, that hate was being harbored on social media, not only in our city, but really across our region. And in collaborating with Counselor Walsh and the mayor, we really talked about how best to take a stand against this racism and hate, but also how to support individuals in our city when they do come forward, and they identify that they feel they've been a target of, or that the group they represent has been a target of hate and tolerance, or simply indifference to such matters. And the mayor, Counselor Walsh, and I felt very strongly that we need to step up each time individuals come forward to make sure we support them so that others do the same in the future. And I believe this resolution speaks for itself and what it's calling for. But I ask that we, our city employees and its officials, lead by example in terms of, in terms of standing up and calling out acts of hatred and indifference and racism in our community and our society, whether they appear in person or online. It's never okay, and I think that's, it's incumbent upon all good people and all elected officials to stand together united against such acts. Counselor Walsh, I know you wish to speak, and you are also an author of this resolution. The floor is now yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. A few people have commented via social media that this resolution could abridge people's First Amendment rights. And I would just like to clarify that a resolution is basically used to express a body's approval or disapproval of something which they cannot otherwise vote on. And this is the case here. This resolution has no enforcement mechanism attached to it. Regardless, the First Amendment does not guarantee people the freedom to say whatever and whenever they like. The U.S. Supreme Court has decided that speech can be regulated in time, place, and manner, and that hate speech is not protected. The social media post to which this resolution was directed, even if it was not hate speech, was at least insensitive and insulting. Asking people to take a stand against racism is not a violation of the First Amendment. It makes us all better people. I'll be voting in favor of this resolution. Thank you.
Counselors, I have a motion from Counselor Van Hazinga and a second from Counselor Zarella to approve the Resolution 117-20. Speaking on the motion, counselors, I'll give you a moment.
Speaking.
Speaking on the motion, Counselor Boishman?
Yeah, I got a question. What I don't understand is, I usually try to treat people with kindness and respect. What are we supposed to do? I mean, if I'm on Facebook, what am I supposed to do if I see somebody talking? Just knock the guy off? I mean, knock him out of the picture, when I mean stop them from talking? I don't understand what we're trying to do.
So I'm gonna, I apologize. I'm going to mute everyone here. One second. Counselor, this is certainly a non-binding resolution, and every situation and circumstance are going to be different. I can't, I want to be careful not to paint every situation and scenario with a broad brush here. But, you know, in this particular instance, this was posted to a forum, and it remains. And it was hateful and hurtful, and someone came forward and expressed that they felt hurt and that a minority group in the city was targeted. So I would, you know, I would suggest that, you know, we examine those circumstances and see, is it appropriate to remove the post? Is it appropriate to approach the individual? You know, I think it's just about good people taking a stand and calling it out when we see it. You know, in some cases, it's saying it's not acceptable. In other cases, yes, it could mean removing it, as Counselor Walsh previously stated. Hate speech is not protected by the First Amendment. So I think, again, there's, I don't want to paint with a broad brush, but it's about calling it out, and it's about approaching it in whichever way you deem most appropriate to diffuse the matter. And I think it's also about working with, and I failed, I neglected to mention earlier, that we worked with the Human Rights Commission and Barbara Nealon. And Barbara and our Human Rights Commission are wonderful at resource to our community and advocates in our community. And I think they really give us an opportunity to ask them about best ways of handling and in advancing the dialogue. Next, I have, I believe I have Counselor Zarella wishing...
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this is something that's very important for us to stand on. While on an academic level, I would very respectfully disagree with my colleague says to the First Amendment status of such speech. In this case, I don't think that matters, because, as G.K. Chesterton once put it, "To have a right to do a thing is not at all the same as to be right in doing it." You have a First Amendment right to be a jerk. You have a First Amendment right to say awful things. I have a First Amendment right to tell you that that makes you a jerk, and that I don't wish to tolerate that in my city. And that's exactly what I think we need to say loud and clear, is that we're not looking to silence anyone, but we can speak too, and we can say, this is not acceptable. We can say, this is not what Fitchburg is supposed to look like. I am a very proud descendant of immigrants. I value diversity in this city, and I think that anyone who thinks otherwise, anyone who thinks that we should be treating people differently, depending on what they look like or where they're from, may have a right to their opinion, but I have no interest in hearing it. So I will be voting in favor of this.
And next, we have Counselor Schultz. Give me one moment. Counselor Schultz, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Kusmerik. I just want to say that I'm wholeheartedly in favor of this resolution, because I know that there's been racist groups trying to penetrate this area. There's been some stickering done in Lummester, Fitchburg, and recently in Lewinburg. So I know that racism does exist in this area, so I'm very... So I know that racism does exist in this area. So I'm very happy that we're taking this stand. Thank you.
Next, we have, Counselor Green is joining us here. Counselor Green, the floor is yours.
I'm sorry about that. If I'm to understand, is the post still active on the site? It has not been removed?
It's since been removed, Counselor.
Okay, so I guess my, what are we to do when we see like these posts happening? If they're not on our, you know, we all, we all belong to different groups on Facebook. So when we see stuff like this happening in our various groups that we belong to, what are we supposed to do? What's the first thing we should do? Who do we report to?
So Counselor, I'd say, you know, this is, the idea of this, first, it's a non-binding resolution, as all resolutions are before this body. And I would suggest that, you know, it's not about this one post, and it's not about even the next post. It's about, it's about generally in our society, ensuring that we stand up for those that have been the target of, of hate and racism and intolerance and bigotry. But it's about supporting those individuals that stand up and calling it out when we see it. So Counselor, again, each person is going to do this in their own way. And I think, you know, you may call it out and choose to call out that behavior and say that's not tolerated, you know, on my page, or on this page, or in our city, or in our society, whatever it may be. And, you know, that behavior won't be tolerated in my presence when it happens in person, in calling it out and saying that's not okay. You know, and I think when you do see it, I think it's contacting either the person who posted it and asking them to take it down, the person who moderates a page, or if you yourself, it's being posted to your wall or in response to a thread. Again, I can't, I can't, and I won't go through every potential scenario, but I think your point is a good one, that it's going to happen in a lot of places, and it's finding the appropriate way for us to combat hate in our community. Counselors, with that, I believe that has exhausted the speaker's list. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And second, to approve the resolution, Madam Clerk, if you could conduct the roll call.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Counselor Zarella.
Yes.
President Kuschmerich.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
Yes.
Counselor Kucher.
Yes.
Counselor Gina Tally.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squallia.
Yay.
Counselor Ben Hasenga.
Yes.
It is unanimous.
I think, counselors, I skipped over, and I apologize. Tom Skorowski is joining us. He was noted to be a special guest regarding the public hearing that was scheduled for this evening. It's now been moved to May nineteenth. But with that, I apologize, Tom, that I skipped over you and want to welcome you with us this evening. You have the floor, sir.
Great to see everyone this evening. Am I unmuted?
You are unmuted. Yes, you have the floor.
Okay, I just got an announcement there. So I just wanted to give a brief overview as to where things are with our zoning work. So if you all recall, the zoning rewrite efforts really phased into two sections. The first phase is really the kind of foundational, fundamental work we need to do in terms of clearing up inconsistencies, removing redundancies, you know, diagnizing crossing Ts, so to speak, to ensure that we've got a good foundation in place for Phase Two, which is really the big stuff. That's big map amendments. That's a lot of the changes that we're looking to do to align with our Economic Development Strategic Plan. So last Tuesday, we had intended to take on Phase One with Legislative Affairs, at which point it would have come to council for its public hearing tonight. And I think early last week, Counselor Walsh and I realized pretty early on that, you know, the packet of information that was sent out to counselors was sent out at the end of February. And just given that the world has changed around us in that time, we felt like, you know, all the counselors here would be forgiven for not having taken the last month to read from cover to cover our zoning ordinance and the rewrite associated with it. So we wanted to give some extra time to really allow for counselors to review the information and to contact myself or, you know, Counselor Walsh with any particular questions that they might have. And basically, what was submitted for Legislative Affairs next Tuesday and which will go to council the following Tuesday. There are four documents, and I just wanted to give you a brief overview. So there's an overview, kind of a one-pager of all the major changes that will be taking place in Phase One. And then there is the track changes version of the zoning ordinance, where if you're curious to see which changes have been made compared to the actual zoning ordinance we have today, the track changes is a great way for you to see those changes. If that's too dizzying for the eye, you can look at the clean version, and that might be what we actually refer to as we're making changes throughout. And then, in addition to that, there is a PowerPoint that I'll be delivering at Legislative Affairs as well as council, if requested, the following week, that just in brief kind of gives an outline of these changes. So just wanted to give you all an update. If you had those materials in February, I would encourage you to take a look at the new ones. They're new and improved in a couple of small ways, but I think it's just important also for us to make sure we're all using the same document as we talk about this next week and the week following. Also, just wanted to throw it out there. Zoning is pretty complicated. It's dense stuff. It's a big book of information and legalese. If you all want to talk any of this through with me, I'm open for meetings, phone call, email, whatever the case may be. I want to walk you all through this to ensure that we can have a productive conversation next week and the week following. So just wanted to put that out there.
So Tom, you're absolutely right. The world has certainly changed since then, and this is, this is tremendous work that you and others have put in to this point, and it certainly deserves its due diligence and its full attention of the body. So I appreciate you being patient here and slowing down the process. But I think this is certainly worthwhile that we do so, and to give both the council and the public an opportunity to fully review this and provide that feedback and comments to us. So thank you, Tom, and thank you, Counselor Walsh, for getting together and discussing that. And Tom, I know the world has changed, and more than one way for you as the father of a newborn. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Absolutely.
So yeah, with that caveat, I am open most of the time when I'm not taking care of a toddler, but, and an infant at the same time. So feel free to give me a call, set up a time. I'd be happy to talk any of this through.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Skorowski. So we will plan on seeing you in two weeks' time for the public hearing.
Looking forward to it, guys. Take care.
Thank you. Counselors, next, we have, we have one petition or one committee matter that remains, zero eighty-nine twenty. Counselor Bernie Schultz and resident Alex Freeman of Seventy Rainville Avenue to remove the no-turn-on-red sign at the intersection of John C. Centrino Memorial Drive and Water Street. This was referred on March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty, and there's a request that this be given either more time or leave to withdraw. And, Counselors, this is at your discretion, but I think, as you know, the, as we just mentioned, the world has certainly changed in what it was referred on March seventeenth. I don't think we thought that we wouldn't be meeting again for the next two months. So this, the matter is now before this body as to whether or not they'd like to give it leave to withdraw or allow more time in committee.
I think the motion, we give it more time.
Second.
I have a motion and second to grant zero eighty-nine twenty more time in the respective committee. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Counselor Zarella.
Yes.
President Kuschmerich.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
Yes.
Counselor Kucher.
Yes.
Counselor Gina Tally.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming. Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squallia.
Yay.
Counselor Ben Hasenga.
Yes.
That is a unanimous vote.
And that concludes the agenda for this evening. Counselors.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those, Madam Clerk, I apologize. I keep doing that, these old habits. If you could lead us with a roll call vote to adjourn.
Sure. Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Counselor Zarella.
Yes.
Counselor Kuschmerich.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
Yes.
Counselor Kucher.
Yes.
Counselor Gina Tally.
Yes.
Counselor Fleming.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squallia.
Yay.
Counselor Ben Hasenga.
Yes.
And that is unanimous.
Thank you, Counselors. We are adjourned.
Good night.